Hello, hi, everybody. Welcome back to the Adventures in Government Operations with your committee here. We are going, we're reconvening today, Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, at 3:00 PM for decision-making on measures previously heard on January 30th. We are convened in Conference Room 225, and meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, as we saw potentially last week, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 3:01 PM Thursday, February 6th, 2025, in Room 225, and a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. So with that, we're going to go right into decision-making. The first bill we have up for decision-making today is Senate Bill 161. Our good friends at EIG already took the vote on this bill, so our recommendations, as reflected with them, is going to be to pass as a Senate Draft 1. On Page 1, Line 7, we're going to replace "shall be exempt" with "may be exempted." Page 1, Line 8, we're going to delete "inspection and certificate of occupancy." Page 1, end of Line 12, we're going to add "provided that the state project is not within the special flood hazard area as identified by FEMA on their flood insurance rate maps." We're going to delete Page 1, Line 13 through Page 2, Line 4, and replace it with a new section that states, "Subsection B, when a state agency undertakes a project that is to be dedicated to accounting desires to be exempt from county permit requirements, the state agency may prepare a programmatic or project-specific agreement with the county that establishes requirements and standards for review and acceptance by said county, and such as inspection and certificate of occupancy requirements and management of construction recorded documentation." And then, we're also going to amend Subsection C to say, "When a state agency exempts a project from county building permit, the project shall be included in a report that is regularly made available to the public, such as in a board report or list of monthly environmental exemption notifications." We're also adding a new Section 4 to read. Section 4, "Any state agencies desiring to utilize exemptions from county permitting processes may establish a co-op working group with the counties and other stakeholders to identify the collective needs at the state level to support the indemnification of infrastructure adequacy, site development reviews, building permits inspections, certificates of occupancy, management and construction records. Such a working group may also identify state resources that may be needed to coordinate and integrate such processes with the county, and a working group may also consider other actions which may be needed to support state construction activities, such as the establishment of a state development or zoning agency, and the working group may also be established as a committee or a permitted interaction group of an existing board or inter-agency council." We'll be adding a new Section 5, that if such a working group is established, it must be subject to requirements of Chapter 92, and submit an interim progress report to the legislature no later than 20 days prior to the convening of the regular session of 2026. And we're going to add the defective date of the Friends of EIG of 2050. A lot of changes, members, but hopefully this will address the concerns that came up. So with that, are there any questions or comments? If not, Senator Moriwaki, thank you for taking the vote. Recommendation as a Senate Draft, I vote yes.
Senate Bill 161, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Gabbard, excuse. Moriwaki, aye. Senator Zanetti, excuse. And Senator Yurichu, aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Senate Bill 92, relating to emergency medical response. We're awaiting information from DAGs on this measure to make it better, so we're going to defer time certain to 3:00 PM on Thursday, February 6th, 2025, in this room, 225. Next up, we have Senate Bill 635, relating to energy efficiency. Recommendation is a Senate Draft 1. We're going to have the Hawaii State Energy Office take the lead on the survey, with DAGs providing technical assistance, and we're going to add a science priority for the required state facilities' cost-effective energy efficiency measures to first responder facilities. We're taking this from Senate Bill 700 and putting it in this one, since it all has to do with energy efficiency. Then a defective date of 2491 to have further discussion on the changes. Members, questions? Comments? If not, Vice Chair Pro Temp, SD 1, I vote yes.
Chair votes yes. All members present?
Vote no.
All the members who are excused, not the present. Okay, other members here, Senator Fivella, Moriwaki, voting aye. And here is...
Aye.
Aye. You want to vote on this one, Senator?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for your ayes, Bill. Appreciate it.
I'll defer to the chair.
Measure it up?
Okay. Okay, good.
All right.
Measure S35.
Measure gets through. Senate Bill 700, next up. Okay, what we're going to do on this bill here is, we're going to go ahead, and a couple of changes, is we're going to have the Hawaii State Energy Office work in conjunction with the state departments to conduct the feasibility study. We're going to remove the distributed energy systems language of the bill, because it's already in SB 412, which we passed. We're also going to go ahead, as we detailed earlier, remove the efficiency into the previous bill. So this bill here will focus in on assessing the feasibility, developing resilience hubs that can provide emergency services and be open to the general public during times of emergency, which includes renewable energy. So we do believe it fits in the title of the bill. A defective date of 2491 to discuss further changes to the measure. Members, questions? Comments? If not, Senate Draft 1, I vote yes.
Chair votes yes. Senator Gabbard, excuse. Moriwaki, yes. Senator Zanetti, Ventura?
Yes.
And Senator Yurichu?
Aye.
Chair, measure passes.
Thank you, everybody. Senate Bill 869, relating to community outreach boards. This is for our Big Island friends, and so, working with them, we're going to take the public first law center suggested amendments on Page 4, Line 5, and delete the words "or organized," because these boards operate under a county commissioner department who manages the scheduling coordination. We're adding a defective date of 2491 to ensure that these changes comport with the intent of the bill. In the committee report, we're going to provide an example of a community outreach board for clarification to the world at large. Members, questions? Comments? If not, Senator Moriwaki, SB 869, Senate Draft 1, I vote yes.
With other members, not the members, with the members, excuse, all other members here, anyone voting no, anyone following a reservation. Measure passes, SD 1 passed.
Okay, thank you very much. Senate Bill 615, relating to procurement. I discussed the concerns with the author. However, this bill, because of what's going on, it's a federal government, could open up even more issues for Hawaii, so given all of that, at this time, we're going to have to put this aside and hopefully work on it in the future. Deferred indefinitely, are we good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, members. Appreciate your support. 1081, relating to legislative budget office. Recommendation on this one is, we're going to keep the repeal portion for the LBOs that were, I mean, for the joint legislative committees that were set up but never actually effectuated. We're going to turn this into a feasibility study and have them look at all the things that would be needed, including office space, equipment, staff, and benefits for the report, and a defective date of 2491. In the committee report, we're going to note that these kinds of legislative, that both the JLBC and the legislative analysts were never set up. Also, to assess the cost of establishing an LBO, as we looked at other states, the costs vary across the board, but the minimum estimated cost is $1 million, and so therefore, this is why we think a feasibility study is needed first. We're going to recommend in the committee report that ways and means, should they choose to hear and advance this measure, that $50,000 be allocated for the feasibility study, as that is the cost for working groups of this similar size and scope. Members, questions? Comments? If not, Senate Bill 1081, Senate Draft 1, I vote yes.
Members here, anyone voting no, with reservation, measure adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Senate Bill 711, relating to gubernatorial appointments. Recommendation, in working with the author of this measure, is a Senate Draft 1, and we're going to only apply to any advisor whose salary is more than $200,000, which does not come from the governor's budget. And given the changes in testimony, we're going to also defect date to January 1st, 2491, for further discussion. Members, questions? Comments? If not, 711, Senate Draft 1, I vote yes.
Members present, anyone voting no, reservation, measure adopted.
Okay. Next up, Senate Bill 405, Neighborhood Board Meetings, Agendas, Reports. Recommendation is, we're going to put a defective date of 2491 into this measure. However, we're going to note in the committee report the concerns from OIP, and we're going to have them, the next committee, look in the issues, as the changes in this measure may also affect Senate Bill 869, as we discussed previously. Members, questions? Comments? If not, 405, SD 1, I vote yes.
Members present, anyone voting no, reservation, measure adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Senate Bill 1132, relating to childcare, in the spirit of working with Team Senate, working with my colleagues, I'm going to defer this bill, my bill, and we're going to work on my colleague's bill, Senator Chang's Bill 1616, instead, to keep the conversation going. So this one is bye-bye. Next up, Senate Bill 381. What we're going to do on this one here is, we're going to go ahead and we're going to put a defective date of 2491. We want the next committee judiciary to really focus in on the privacy and other issues that were raised in the testimonies. This is more there for Juliana. So we'll put that in the committee report for have them examine those issues, but for right now, we're just going to defect date and move it along to that. Members, questions? Comments? If not, SB 381, Senate Draft 1, I vote yes.
All members present, anyone voting no, reservation, measure adopted.
Okay, thank you. Senate Bill 2. On this one here, we're going to keep it moving for further discussion. We discussed the concerns with the author, and with their concurrence, we're going to amend this bill by making it a pilot project for two years in the districts that are politically defined as 4-1, 4D, and E, which are the political subdivisions for the district in which this senator is already doing these things. There will be a report back to the legislature, and of course, there will be a defective date of 2491. In the committee report, we're going to note, it's already ongoing in the district, and as such, this creates a pilot. We're also going to note that according to DAGs, the costs associated with planting of fruit trees around a typical DAGs property would be approximately $310,000 for 10 trees on an already established site. An additional $90,512 annually would include all of the irrigation maintenance, on-call arborists, and tree trimming service and staffing. Those amounts were drawn from prior solicitations. We're going to have the next committees look into the costs associated with just the pilot using this as a basis. Members, questions? Comments? If not, Senate Bill 2, Senate Draft 1, I vote yes.
All members present, anyone voting no, reservation, measure adopted. With amendments?
Okay, thank you so much. Next up, Senate Bill 111. We appreciate everybody's indulgence in our hearing the other day, but due to the confusion caused by the alarms during the hearing of the measure, and in talking to the PSM Chair, we passed out, this measure and other measure are pretty much identical. So even though the previous committee took a vote on the bill, with their concurrence, we decided not to move this further, so we won't be taking a vote on this bill. We're about to end this journey right here. Okay. Next up, the Senate Bill 239, relating to disaster preparedness. We already, what we're going to do on this one, as we discussed earlier, is to remove correctional facilities from sheltering the public, and this was adopted by the other committee. Exempt structures from sheltering that are not fully enclosed or able to shelter a large population, for example, cover playgrounds or sheds. We're going to change public buildings to state buildings, and we're going to add, accept the DAGs recommendation that were made in their testimony, and a defective date of 2491. Members, questions? Comments? If not... Wait, a brief recess, one second. Just, we're going to put a defective date on the measure, that's all. Okay? All right, with that little brief recess, thank you for the indulgence. Senate Bill 239, Senate Draft 1, I vote yes.
All members present, anyone who voted no, reservation, measure amended and adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Finally, Senate Bill 998. The recommendation, as we discussed the other day, is as is. We are, in the committee report, going to ask the committee on WHAM to consider the estimate provided to the committee by DAGs, which includes site selection, including screening of up to eight sites statewide, and a detailed review of the top preferred three sites. That's why we calculated the $100,000 for the duties the consultant would be anticipated to do. Members, any questions or comments? If not, SB 998, as is, I vote yes.
All members present, anyone voting no, reservation, measure adopted and amended.
All right, thank you, guys. Brief recess, and we'll get into our regular hearing. All right, welcome back to the Committee on Government Operations. On with our hearing today. We have, first up, Senate Bill 1175, relating to procurement. This adds the state contractor's performance assessments to information required to be included in the past performance database maintained by the SBO. First up, we have SBO.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Bonny Calhoun, Administrator, State Procurement Office. We'll stand on our written testimony in support, but we do need to make a correction. We said that there would be an additional cost of $7,500 to revise the contractor's past performance database. In actuality, that cost is $30,000.
So from $7,000, that's a big difference.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have Department of Transportation. Okay, thank you so much. And then finally, we have late from Ryan Secuta, General Contractors Association. They have written in opposition. That's all we have on 1175. Anybody else in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none. Members, questions? Seeing none, we will move... Oh, yes, of course, go ahead.
I just want a clarification to $30,000 you just said. But, my question first.
So, GCA said that the State Procurement Board voted against some of these revisions that are being asked on past performance. Can you clarify that, whether these additions on performance, quality of performance and so forth, is due to put into the past performance database?
The Procurement Policy Board only went by what was in the bill, and so they were very firm that all these other evaluation criteria was not in the bill, and they did not want to address those, so they only went with what's in, what was exactly detailed in the bill. So I think if we had these other details in there, we could move forward. We did, we did give them other options to evaluate performance and management and safety, but they were insisting that it wasn't in the bill, and they were not going to address it. And they were also concerned that there were some subjectiveness to those other performance. And we, as the State Procurement Office, we said, but the information that's in the past performance database right now does not give the agencies any real data to evaluate a performance, because you're just using a name, if it's on time, not on time, a budget, not a budget. So that was their concern.
Chair, one more question.
Yes.
So on an ongoing basis, you're requesting funding, so you don't have monies for that as a line item for your past performance data?
We were given a specific budget to do the past performance database, and we met the deadline and we used that budget. So this additional fund, and $30,000 would be the maximum. We hope that it's not more than that, but it will require some development to take down the current past performance assessment and put up a new one.
But do you have ongoing funding leads for...
For the maintenance.
Maintenance.
And the maintenance will...
And that's not in your budget currently?
No, it is.
Okay, so this is just new stuff that you're going to add?
That's a new, right.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Yes, so I have a couple of questions. The first question is, you said from $7,500 to $30,000.
Yes.
But that is in addition to the continued funding of the $13,500.
Correct. So that's a one-time, the $30,000 is just a one-time fee to redevelop. And again, that's a maximum that we were able to get a, you know, quick estimate on. We don't expect it to be that much, but we also don't want to be short and not be able to produce the whole, the whole thing.
So who's going to input in the, the new data? Would it be your office?
No, it would be currently the agency that maintains that contract, the contract administrator or the procurement officer is responsible for completing the assessment at the end of each of their, at the end of each of the contracts.
At the end of the contract. If the contract is completed and there are problems that have been caused, I'm thinking about Hawaii State Hospital, okay?
Okay.
Completed, tens of millions of dollars spent, and then we find more problems with it. Who puts in the information regarding quality of work, past performance, because we really need to know who that contractor was so that we don't have the same problems again?
Absolutely. So it, again, would be the agency's responsibility that...
That would be Department of Health.
Yes, it would be Department of Health. They would put the data in, answer all the questions. The system allows the, that evaluation to go to the contractor, so he can, he can also put his comments in. He could say that he was delayed because of whatever reason he was delayed, and that's...
Well, it says quality of work. If all of a sudden we give it like Fs, I mean, the roof is leaking, it's a brand-new roof, the elevator, I don't know, whatever it was. So the, I mean, fungus is starting to, and mold is starting to grow when it's only been less than a year old, and does this, that's a past performance database get updated, like, within a year after seeing all of the defects in the work?
No, it's meant to only handle it once the contract is completed.
So if there's a walkthrough and we don't see this defects until like a few, until people started moving in and started using the place for what it's supposed to do, then this past performance quality isn't really helpful later on, right?
Unless the statute changes, right now, it's only at the completion of that contract.
Okay.
At that time, in that point of time, when they complete it, this is what the assessment is.
Would you be amenable to a proposed amendment for an update, like, within a year after completion, and so that there will be an assessment of the agency when they moved in, they started using the building for what it's supposed to be for, and finding out that it's not what they expected?
I see, I, yeah, I think, I think this is a stark, at least agencies can go, maybe there were problems with this building to begin with at the completion, and at least they can go to that and say, there were some issues along the way, and they can address, they can check with the new, or the new agency who is soliciting, can go to this and say, there were some issues with this. Because the bill says, I believe it was Senator Moriwaki that introduced that bill, that when you procure, when you do a new procurement, you have to consider past performance. So if we do a one-year review, there may be a problem that another solicitation happened before the year, and so they won't have that data, but it will help agencies that, you know, beyond that first year.
Okay, so you're not amenable to any amendment right now?
Oh, no, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that there might be challenges, and it may not be...
Oh, yeah, well, there's going to be challenges now, because quality of work is kind of subjective, right?
Yes, it is, it is. But it gives both agency and the vendor opportunity to have that conversation, and it's not only a one-way, you know, conversation. It's not just the agency saying, it's really bad.
No.
And the vendor not having an opportunity to...
Well, you couldn't, okay, but there will be like a potential, at least, I would request an amendment for a one-year evaluation with specifications, so that you can't just say, really bad.
Yeah, of course.
You've got to say, the roof is leaking, there's fungus.
Yeah.
Okay, or else, the other question is, third one, is this also applicable to like software? We're having problems with our modernization. We hire tech people to come in, and then we find out that, that when they go online, we see major bugs.
The, this past performance database is required for all IFBs, RFPs, and sole sources.
So it doesn't matter, okay.
It doesn't matter.
So I would, so to me, the one-year evaluation is even more needed for like software development.
Okay.
So that's my proposal. I'll work with you.
We will, we will take it into serious consideration.
Thank you.
We will give it consideration.
I'm thinking about the DHS modernization, okay, problems. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. Oh, it's on the first one. Next up, Senate Bill 15887, relating to retainage. Allows procurement officers to withhold a retainage fee of 1% of the total budget from contractors to ensure satisfactory project completion. This could kind of speak to what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Requires a retainage fee to be paid to the contractors within a certain number of days after a project completion. So with that, we have DAGs.
Chair, members, Keith Regan, Comptroller for Department of County General Services. We stand on our written testimony, writing comments on this measure, happy to answer your questions.
Good, thank you so much. We have SPO.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Bonny Calhoun, for the State Procurement Office. We'll stand on our written testimony, providing comments.
Okay, thank you so much. And then we have late from the Subcontractors Association of Hawaii. They have submitted written in support. That's all we have on 1587. Anybody in the audience or Zoom land wishing to testify? Seeing none. Members, questions on this bill? No? Or yes? No. No. Okay, that will move on to the next one, which is Senate Bill 1543. This one here, relating to government accountability, which will require each purchasing agent to provide a justification for hiring external consultants, and cap the amount each agency can spend on said external consultants. So first up, we have Department of Education. Thank you so much. Appreciate your comments. BNF?
Chair, good afternoon, Mr. Silver, like, financial, stand on our written testimony, providing comments, highlighting some of the...
Understood. Thank you, sir, for being here. SPO?
SPO, stand on his written testimony, providing comments.
Okay, thank you very much. We have, let's see, also, Comptroller.
Chair, members, Keith Regan, Comptroller, Department of County and General Services. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments, and happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much, sir. We have ERS, Mr. Thomas Williams. They too have comments of concern. Next up is Shannon Holman, President for the American Council of Engineering Companies Hawaii.
Hello, Chair, committee members. My name is Charles Jury. I'm here on behalf of ACCH, the American Council of Engineering Companies of Hawaii. I'm on the Board of Directors, I'm the president-elect, so I'm representing for Shannon Holman. The ACCH represents more than 70 member firms here in Hawaii. That's civil, electrical, mechanical engineers, landscape architects, and land surveyors. That represents about 1,500 employees throughout the state. ACCH opposes this bill. While the bill's purpose appears to be well-intended, aiming to build in-house expertise, the provisions raise significant concerns about the potential impact on our state agencies, their efficiency and effectiveness to execute and manage and deliver vital projects. In our written testimony, we did list seven key concerns that we had. In the interest of time, I'm just going to kind of highlight a few of them, and then stand on our written testimony. One of the things we wanted to speak about was the separation of owner and designer. We feel it's essential for the state to maintain a clear separation between the owner and the designer. This separation allows for independent third-party reviews by agencies and consultant design, ensuring unbiased assessments, and preventing potential interests of, conflict of interests. We also believe that mandating things such as a cost-benefit analysis, legislative approval, this could significantly lengthen the already long procurement process that our projects have to go through. Also addressing the in-house design capacity, so our state agencies have large vacancies already, and capping spending limits on external consultants, especially in the shortage of in-house expertise, that also could really potentially delay infrastructure and important projects for the state. that also could really potentially delay infrastructure and important projects for the state. We did also provide in here, there was a recent study done for ACECH in 2016 by the New York University Tandem School of Engineering, and it compared in-house design costs for DOT versus external consultants. We provided some of the key findings in there in the testimony, so you folks can review that. Again, ACECH, we are in opposition of this bill. Open for any questions. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for being here, sir. I think that is all we have on 1543. Anybody in the audience or might be on Zoom wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions on this bill? Nope, seeing none. We will move on to the next one, which is 1255. This measure here relating to government records is clarifies government records subject to disclosure requirements under UIPA, Uniform Information Practices Act, include information as created, received, maintained, or used by private contractors in performance of a government-function outsourcing contract. First up, we have Attorney General's Office. They've written in opposition. Next up is Tommy Johnson, which is Director of Corrections Rehabilitation.
Aloha, Melanie Martin, Deputy Director for Administration of Corrections Rehabilitation. Speaking on behalf of Tommy Johnson, we stand on our written testimony in opposition to this.
Thank you so much. Next up is OIP.
Good afternoon, Chair, members. Department of County and General Services. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments, happy to answer your questions.
Thank you so much. Doug Mellner, League of Women Voters of Hawaii. They are in support. Sylvia Madison, individual in support. Ben Kreps, Public First Law Center. Are you on Zoom? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee. Ben Kreps, Public First Law Center. We submitted written testimony with comments on this measure, and we've offered a handful of friendly amendments to improve and simplify it. I have had the chance to review the testimony, in particular, the testimony in opposition from the AGs and also from DCR. And I believe that our proposed amendments do satisfy all of their concerns, particularly with respect to the additional agency effort or burden that the bill as written would create or potentially create. So we've offered, again, amendments to simplify it and improve it. But one thing we disagree with the AG's testimony about is the AG says, well, this isn't necessary. These records are already public records under current law. And while that's true, what this bill does is close a loophole. And that's a loophole where an agency gives up through a contract, gives up ownership rights or control rights to work product that was created under that contract. There's a Civil Beat article from December of last year. It's titled, "UH Contract Hides President's Search Details." And if I had to guess, I'd say that this bill aims to address that issue. So I'd encourage, you know, the members of the committee and everybody to, to take a look at that article to understand better the, the need for this particular bill. And I, I appreciate the chair sending this for hearing and also for the authors for trying to take on this problem. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. We also have Ted Kephalas from Grassroots Institute, written in support. That's all we have on 1255. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Yes.
Chair, excuse me. Still have, from the Attorney General's Office, as I was standing up, somebody was.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say that we are in opposition for the reasons set forth in our statement. And we have to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, is there anybody else wishing to testify on the measure? Seeing none, members, questions? Nope, seeing none. We are going to move on to 1513 relating to appropriations. This prohibits the transfer of funds appropriated for positions to operating expenses and vice versa, except to fulfill the legislature's purpose for which the funds were appropriated. First up, we have the C, PSDIE, Corrections and Rehabilitation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Melanie Martin, Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. I'm here with Tommy Johnson. We stand on our written testimony in opposition to this measure. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We also have Budget Finance.
Good afternoon, Chair, members. Louis Oliver, Budget and Finance. We will stand on our written testimony, providing comments. Appreciate the intent, but do understand that we need to test our operations.
Understand, understand completely. We have Ryan Yamani, new director of DHS, written with comments similar to that of our Budget Finance Director. And finally, Ted Kephalas from Grassroots Institute, written in support. That's all we have on 1513. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, Zoom land? Nope, seeing none, members, questions? Quick question of BNF.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Note the concerns in the testimony about real-world issues and such. If we were to put in an emergency exception into this bill, that would also have a reporting requirement for when that exception or the two existing exceptions were used, would that help to assuage the concerns of your agency insofar as trying to ensure that money that we appropriate under the Articles of Powers of Separation is being carried out as such?
We would want to take a look at what those exceptions were. We're open to having dialogue with.
There are already two in the bill already. There's two exceptions in the bill already.
You know, I would like to point out, Chair, that one, one of the things that we are going through right now is the implementation of a new budget management system.
This is the famous one?
No, this is not the famous. This is actually Budget and Finance's system that's going to be specifically worked just for the budgeting. And the intent really is to provide a higher degree of transparency than, other than what exists right now. And I think what we do is that once that system is placed, it's, we are currently in an RFP, open RFP right now. So there's not much that I can talk about it. But once we have that, that system in place, you will start to see a lot more transparency on the utilization of funds going forward, which I think would provide you the level of analysis to make that determination on how funds are being transferred between payroll and other current expenses.
And when do you expect this? I mean, given the expected RP, when do you expect that this system will be, I guess, implemented?
Well, the schedule that we have in the RFP right now is that we would like the system to be in place by, by the supplemental, by, actually, by next year, by the time that we enter into the supplemental budget.
So basically, it'll be January 1st of 2026?
Probably more like middle of the year of 2026.
So July, so we would make this January 1st, 2027, that would fit into your, into your.
It would, it would kind of, yeah. It would fall in line to when we would have that information.
Okay, cool. Okay, thank you.
I do.
Yeah, of course. Get the ball rolling, go ahead.
So, Mr. Director, in terms of the new system that you're talking about, would it show the transfer? And is it real-time or is it reporting after?
It would actually provide a lot more level of real-time, you know, visibility into the expenditure of funds. And again, this is something that's in conjunction with the immense work that the comptroller is doing with the EFS system. Our intention really is to align budgeted data with expenditure data. And that's something that doesn't exist today. You know, we don't close the books on a monthly basis. So kind of providing, you know, us, actually the executive, as well as the legislative, with that information to determine, you know, how are we utilizing that money? Because right now, given the systems that we have and given the budget system that we have. I mean, I'll be honest, a budget system that we have right now is very static. It is a combination of spreadsheets and Word documents, and it's not system, in a system itself. But putting it into a system, creating the, the intelligence as well as the analytics around having all of that information going forward is really going to provide that level of transparency that, that I believe that the legislature is looking for.
You'll have positions and budgeting, and then you will reconcile as you go along.
And again, I don't want to talk about what, what the comptroller is doing, but this is really part of the whole overall comprehensive ERP strategy of the state, where you have the expenditure information that's happening, you have the budgetary information that's happening, as well as the personnel and the payroll system that's happening. And working in conjunction together is really what you want to create, you know, a sound financial management system for the state of Hawaii.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm sorry. So, yeah. So my, I mean, I, I love transparency, but my concern is the preventing of transferring of funds from positions to operating expenses, except to fulfill the legislature's purposes. So I'm thinking what is occurring on a number of agencies right now who are having huge problems with workforce shortage and the delays in hiring people. So, so there's funds for positions budgeted, but in the meantime, in order to get the work done, they're going to need to transfer some of that funds to operating expenses to pay for the 89-day hires, the contractors, whatever is necessary to get the work done while they await, you know, the vacancies to be filled. So that, that's, that's my problem with this bill. I, I think we need to make it a little bit more fungible so that people, so that we could have a department like, I'm thinking Department of Health, okay? And I consider emergency, where we had to use a lot of monies during the COVID-19 and move the vacancy monies around for emergency purposes. And when it had the Maui fires, I know DHS and DOH had to move monies around in order to be able to pay for the overtime, the personnel, and the transportation to help out with Maui. But beyond that, I mean, I can't say whether or not our day-to-day workforce shortages post-COVID-19 is going to be helpful if we're going to prevent them from having this, this transferability.
And creating that, that operational flexibility does allow the departments to, again, to operate more efficiently. You know, that being said, the, the process really is that when departments come in and they do their, their budget allotments and their expenditures, it is broken down between payroll and other current expenses. And there is a process that if a department does want to transfer money, say, for example, from payroll down to OCE or from OCE up to payroll, that they do have to come in and ask for approval. So there is a degree of review that goes through it. And, you know, not all requests are, are granted, are going to be approved. There, there needs to be an operational reason why we would allow, again, payroll funds to move down into, into OCE. That being said, Budget and Finance itself would love a higher degree of visibility within departments because our analysis, our analysis can only go so far. But again, providing that flexibility to the, to the departments is, is something that's key for, from an operational perspective, because outside of like having to wait for the next legislative session, the departments could be in a bind operationally.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Okay, next up, we got Senate Bill 1616. This one relating to care centers, we discussed this earlier in deferring the other one. So this bill requires that new and newly renovated state buildings with a budget of $5 million or more include dedicated space for childcare center or an ADC, an adult daycare center. First up, we have DHS, written with comments. We have Deputy Attorney General's Office.
Good afternoon, Chair and committee members. My name is Erin Yamashiro. I'm a Deputy Attorney General from the Department of Attorney General's Office. The Department of Attorney General's Office supports the intent of the bill, provides comments to clarify the statewide application of the bill. And also, we note that the Department of Health is the agency that licenses adult daycare centers. We provided suggested language for the bill, and I'll be here for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We have Comptroller.
Chair members, you have our written testimony providing comments on this measure, but I did want to just make another recommendation that I'd like to enter into the record to amend our testimony. And that's just to clarify what we were talking about related to the feasibility study that's in our written testimony. And I just ask, if you indulge me for a moment, to kind of go over this with the committee. But we would ask that language be inserted that kind of clarifies the feasibility study by stating the following. Feasibility study shall include, but is not limited to, the following items. One, identification and definition as necessary of the philosophy, program, parameters, and regulatory requirements associated with childcare centers. Two, development of criteria to be considered in identification and selection of facilities deemed suitable to accommodate childcare centers. Three, development of childcare center design criteria. Four, development of criteria and procedures for operator qualification, selection, and contracting. Five, identification of the state agency or other to whom responsibility for administration of the program should be assigned. Six, preparation of an estimate of the planning, design, and construction costs anticipated for implementation of a typical childcare center in a state-owned building. And seven, such other tasks may become apparent during the, during the conduct of the feasibility study. Chair, those are items that we'd just like to ask. Or, and, yeah, and if we could just said, or adult daycare center. Sorry about that. Thank you, Gordon, my Public Works Administrator. But that's what we would ask, if we could please amend our written testimony.
Thank you so much for coming up and supplementing your testimony with that.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chair. We finally have Executive Office on learning early, early learning. They have comments. And finally, we have an individual, Johnny May El Perry. They have comments. That's all we have on 1616. Anyone in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions? If not, we'll move on to Senate Bill 74, Budget Finance.
Good afternoon, Chair, Louis Oliver, Department of Budget and Finance. We will stand on our written testimony, providing comments.
Okay, thank you so much. And just for everybody's qualifications relating to state construction projects, and this establishes the Office of State Architect within DAGs, just so everybody knows. Comptroller.
Chair, members, Keith Regan, Comptroller, Department of County and General Services. Stand on our written testimony, providing comments, and happy to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you so much. And finally, Kirby Shaw, DAB.
Good afternoon, Chair. DAB stands on a certain testimony in support, you support the.
Okay, thank you for being here, sir. Appreciate your support, and we have your testimony, so thank you. Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, members, questions? Seeing none, we will move on to the next bill on the agenda, Senate Bill 1205. This measure here would require departments, offices, and other state agencies to make a final determination to reorganize, to submit a report to the legislature. This is a reorg one. First up, we have Attorney General's Office.
Chair, members of the committee. Ian Robertson, Deputy Attorney General. We submitted testimony with comments noting that the title of this bill may violate the single-subject requirement of Article 3, Section 14 of the State Constitution. And also suggesting that the term reorganized included definitions so that agencies have a better idea of when their duty to report is triggered.
Got it.
Available for questions.
I saw that too, actually. All right, we have BNF.
Good afternoon, Chair. The Department will stand on its written testimony, providing comments.
Okay, thank you for the comments. That's all we have on 1205. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, Zoom land? Seeing none, members, questions? Seeing none. We'll move on to the next one on the agenda, which is Senate Bill 786. First up, we have Dylan R. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, and let's see, sorry about that. Budget and Finance.
Good afternoon, Chair. The Department will stand on its written testimony, providing comments, highlighting some of.
Okay, thank you for highlighting those concerns. We appreciate it. OIP.
Good afternoon, Chair, members. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments.
Okay, cool. We have Peter Fritz, individual. Go ahead, sir.
I'm waiting for my video to start. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, just start up. We can hear you, so just go ahead and start testifying. Two minutes are going.
Okay, thank you. I'm an attorney. I've been involved in a lot of disability issues and ADA issues, including discussions with the judiciary regarding the accessibility of certain court orders, and certain changes were initiated. I'm very familiar with the accessibility issue. My concern relates to the definition that this bill uses, which is disability accessible versus yesterday's, the other day's bill, SB 55, which uses digitally accessible and searchable. They're different definitions. It becomes very hard for anyone to know exactly what those mean because they're not defined anyplace in Hawaii revised statutes. OIP raised a particular issue regarding. OIP raised a particular issue regarding the use of the word "full." I understand that. When I drafted the initial one... The real issue with this is that when one looks at the process for requesting documents, one submits a request to the agency, and the agency responds. And the easiest way to ensure that the person gets accessible documents is to say that, and make a request and ask if they need a special accommodation, like you would do for any other document. So if you need a special format, you need an accessible document, and that's what you would start with. This bill also suggests that extra time should be involved to provide it. I think that would violate the ADA because it means that people with disabilities would be being treated differently than those people that don't have disabilities. And I think that that would violate the Americans with Disabilities Act. So I don't support the time. But the reality is, is that the issue of accessible documents could be adjusted and addressed by having people request a special accommodation, just like they do anyplace else. The same thing would be true with SB 55 from the governor. I need an accessible document. This is the kind of document that I need, be it a readable PDF file or a hard copy in large print. When the state adopted Adobe software, Adobe software has a function in it that allows you to take a regular Adobe document.
Mr. Fritz, your two minutes is up, so we need you to summarize at this point.
The state already has the software. Adobe software will convert a PDF to an accessible PDF file, and clicking all the particular functions as well as inserting alt text. So the bills, there needs to be a standard, consistent definition of what constitutes an accessible document. And this hodgepodge of different documents, what's it going to be tomorrow in another bill? Thank you for your discretion of letting me go a little further.
No problem. Thanks for jumping in and testifying. Okay, we, let's see, we have Ryan Yomani, DHS, written with comments. Kirby Shaw. Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate your testimony being here. And finally, we have Honolulu Police Department. Oh, go ahead, Major.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm currently now Acting Major of the Records Division here at the Honolulu Police Department, and we stand on our written testimony in support of this bill.
Okay, thank you so much, Major. Appreciate you being here and for your service. That's all we have, I believe, on this measure. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify, 786? Zoom land? Nope. Seeing none, members, questions?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
Peter Fritz, are you still available? Peter?
He's available, Senator.
So I understand your testimony, that there is no standard. Do you know of any state that has determined a disability accessible standard?
Yes. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And what state is that?
There are about 45 of them. They were in my testimony on the bill regarding, that eventually became Act 172. The majority of states, that was in 2024, or 2022. I'm licensed to practice in Florida. Florida has a statute in there, and that statute was actually brought up at one of the deaf-blind task force meetings.
Yes.
And so that's one statute.
So Peter, if we basically identify a disability accessible format as that of the standards of Title II of the ADA, which is what your testimony is, will that satisfy a standard? What is considered disability accessible?
The report from the Act 172 group adopts a similar type of standard. My suggestion would be to look at the ETS statute, which I think is 27 hyphen 143, and to add a provision in there stating what the standards are under that particular statute that would set forth all the requirements you would need for an agency. And the other thing is, it would give somebody standing to bring a lawsuit under Hawaii law. Right now, I go to federal court.
Okay, so we should just refer to Act 172 Session Law as Hawaii 2022.
That wouldn't be sufficient because those are not supported by any statute. They're just a recommendation. And the recommendation of ETS is that they be put forth before the state in an executive directive. But that's not law. I had a conversation with the now...
Okay, so Peter, I don't want to argue with you. I want to know how we can amend this without arguing so that we can satisfy what is considered a disability accessible format. And I'm trying to read your written testimony, and it keeps referring to Act 172, but you just said that's not even a standard. So it doesn't sound like this bill is ready.
My suggestion would be to look to the ETS statute and to incorporate the actual standards in the ETS statute, so they're part of the statute.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, members? If not, let's move on to 1611. This one would require a person appointed, and I apologize for not reading some of these descriptions earlier, but we're trying to make up for some time. Requires a person appointed to serve as the governor's senior advisor on mental health and justice system, coordinator on homelessness, or another position that serves as senior advisor to the governor to obtain advice and consent of the Senate. First up, we have Will King, senior advisor to the governor, written in opposition. Ryan Yomani, DHS, written in opposition. That's all we have on the measure, 1611. Anybody else in the audience wishing to testify? Zoom land, testify. Members, there are nobody here to testify, so there's nobody to ask questions of. So with that, we will move on to the next one, which is Senate Bill 1637. We have Robin. Okay, thank you so much. I'm sorry? Okay, sorry about that. You're it. Nobody else wishing to testify? Anybody wishing to testify else? Comptroller, no? So any questions of Robin, members? On this measure here. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next one, which is, let's see, 1651. And, sorry about that, glasses are bothering up here. This is public meetings as well. Board packets to required have been posted two or more full business days before a public meeting. First up, we have OIP. Okay, appreciate your comments, Director. Thank you. Sterling Marina, SPJ, written in support. Doug Mellor, LWV, written in support. Ben Kreps, are you there, sir? Okay, go ahead, sir, two minutes.
Okay, good afternoon again. We strongly support this bill. It's needed to carry out the intent of Act 11, which the legislature passed just last year. And we explain why in greater detail in our written testimony, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here today. We also have Mr. Fritz in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair members of the committee. I wrote this bill, and I wrote it because I was constantly receiving notices that have the availability of board packets that were late. In the original bill, it says more than two business days. The reason why it said more than two business days, I don't have a timer going, so I'd appreciate it if you'd let me know what the time is.
That's what we're trying to do right now. Just keep testifying. There we go. Go ahead.
Okay. So I said more than two business days because you can't confuse what more than two business days is. Full business day is not defined, and in other areas, the OIP has decided that six business days means any part of a business day. And therefore, you can post a notice five days and one minute instead of six full days before that. So more than two business days, I agree with, and I think that that's the way to go. And it makes it clearer. I'm a little bit concerned about any type of ambiguity. And that's a change that I would like to see. Although I don't disagree with the support that came from Public First, who I talked about this, and with the League of Women Voters. This corrects something that really shouldn't need to be corrected. And I'd like to see more than two business days just simply because I'd like not to have to come back next year and change it back to more than two business days because the practice of OIP interprets a full business day to be any part of a full business day. I like you all, but in reality, it's...
So if we drew five, then we won't see you as much, is what you're telling us?
I'm sorry? Oh, sorry, I have to, I'm going by the captions, sir. And I'm hearing disabled. I'm hearing, I have a hearing disability, so I rely upon the captions, and they kind of lag behind what you said. And so that's really what I'm kind of asking for. And when you read D.CAB testimony, I explained all of this to D.CAB yesterday. And D.CAB, and why their suggestion at a D.CAB legislative meeting, and why more than three days, or at least three, full three days, could be used. And having been through a number of issues with OIP's making interpretations, I really think that I'd like to make it clearer and get around the rule that has been a problem in the past. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Fritz. We have Late from the Hawaii State Commission on Fatherhood. They have comments. We also have Kirby Shaw, D.CAB. I couldn't agree with you more. Next up, we also have Late from Nanea Lo, individual. She has written in support. Okay, Mr. Edsman, you're on Zoom. Go ahead. Your two minutes are starting now.
Chair McKelvey, Senator Simon Novatara, and members of the committee. First off, I apologize that I directed my testimony, my comments incorrectly. I apologize for that. I'm the chair of the Commission on Fatherhood, and I just wanted to make some comments as someone who actually puts this bill into practice. The Commission on Fatherhood has never had, until now, administrative staff to help us. So I'm the one that does all the posting and meeting the requirements. In order to post our board packet to the website, I need to email the staff that takes care of the website. I have zero control of the website, so I have zero control of the timing for them posting it on the website. I just wanted you to be aware of that. And just to make a recommendation, my personal opinion is that by posting on the website, it makes it more difficult to follow or adhere to the sunshine law for the public because now they go to the state calendar for the agenda and then to the separate website for the board packet. My thought about it is if the state calendar would have a means of posting the board packet directly to the state calendar, it would make it easier, in my opinion, for the public. And it would also make it easier for myself as the one because I can post directly to the state calendar. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you so much for testimony. Appreciate your comments on this. Okay, is there anybody else who I might have missed on this measure? Seeing none, members, questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Senate Bill 1617. We have OIP, and this bill here would basically say no meetings after 9:00 PM. Okay, thank you so much. That's all we have on 1617. Anybody in the audience or Zoom wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions of OIP? Seeing none, let's move on to the next bill, which is Senate Bill 1253, Boards and Commissions. This is a prohibition against board and commission holdover members from holding office beyond the end of the second regular legislative session. We have no testimony for this bill. So nobody asked questions of, and with that, we are going to move on to Senate Bill 1031. This is relating to advisory referendums. This would authorize the legislature to adopt any concurrent resolution and propose an unbinding advisory referendum question to the people. First up, we have League of Women Voters. Go ahead, Ms. Mason.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the committee. I'm Janet Mason, testifying for the League of Women Voters. The League supports this bill, but we have two suggestions. It was not clear to us whether these referenda would refer to statutory law, bond assurances, or both. And the second question, the second suggestion, is that the law be limited to a certain number of referendum on each ballot. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Thank you for testimony. Those are very interesting points there. Okay. We also have numerous, oh, Mr. James Wallace, individual. Is he here to testify? He is, he is in opposition. We also have testimony. 29 people in opposition. Is anybody else in the audience wishing to testify or on Zoom? Seeing none, members, questions of Ms. Mason? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is 1306. And this measure here is, I don't seem to have this on my thing here. Well, 1306, Comptroller.
Chair, thank you. Keith Regan, Comptroller, Department of Accounting and General Services. We stand on our written testimony in support of this bill.
All right, sounds good, since you like it. Okay, let's see. Oh, this, just for everybody's edification, and I apologize. This establishes a procurement automation system special fund, which I know is something that could be very useful. Bonnie? All right, good deal. That's all we have on 1306. Anybody in the audience or Zoom land wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions on this bill? Seeing none. Okay, before, we're going to recess, but we're not going to adjourn because we're going to have to revote a bill we did earlier. So we're going to take a brief recess, and we're going to redo, so, brief recess. Okay, everybody, welcome back. The committee would like to take a vote to reconsider decision-making on SB 239, which was voted on today during the 3:00 PM agenda. A defective date was inadvertently inserted in the amendments, and the vote in PSM did not contain such a date. So to make sure we're all hunky-dory, we're just going to go ahead and do a reconsider motion and then vote the bill again. So motion for reconsideration on Senate Bill 239, I vote yes.
I mean, he was present, and I don't know, and there's patient, whatever it is.
Reconsider.
Reconsideration.
All right. So with that, we are going to vote with SB 239, Senate Draft 1. We're just going to recap the amendments for everybody. We're removing correctional facilities from sheltering the public. We're exempting structures from sheltering that are not fully enclosed or able to shelter a large population, cover playgrounds or shed. We're going to change public buildings to state buildings. We're going to accept DAG's recommendations. This measure only apply to public buildings intending to service shelters during and after a Cat 5 hurricane for which construction is anticipated to commence on or after July 1st, 2026, shall be designed and construed to withstand Category 5 hurricanes and be used as a shelter in the event of an emergency. And that's it. Okay? With that, SB 239, SD 1, I vote yes. All right, did it right. So thank you so much. This concludes the hearing. Is it Friday yet? Okay. Welcome back, everybody. We're at a haste to continue to get everybody on with their day. We regret to announce that, as common practice for the Committee on Government Operations, for all measures which were heard today, we will be deferring decision-making for this agenda, time certain. We'll be reconvening for decision-making on this agenda, February 6, 2025, 3:00 PM, in Conference Room 225. Mahalo again, and apologize for the mix-ups.